Good afternoon. This is Dot Lofstrm. I'm the Chair of the Civil Service Commission. Today is Wednesday, September 11th, 2024, just a little past 2:30, and I bring this meeting to order.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dot. We'll do roll call. Commissioner Lofstrm, here. Commissioner Guterres?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Rulipon?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all. So, the first agenda item is the review and approval of minutes. Does anyone have any comments or something they want to suggest or add?
Yes, on the part of the word describes classification of the public defender's office, and their word says, Mr. Guterres requests this opposition. The word interpret, it's really interpret the laws is what I'm opposed to, in the duty section there, interpret laws.
That seems clear to me. So, does anyone else have any comments or changes? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended by Mr. Guterres.
Yes, I'll second it.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. Okay, minutes are approved. With that, we can move on to the report of disciplinary action. Good afternoon. The report of disciplinary actions for the September 11 meeting include one order of reduction of salary for the Human Services Agency for a social worker for with no appeal. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to accept the report of disciplinary actions?
I so move that we do.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, and the motion has passed. We're accepting the report. Next is an eagerly awaited advice from, or discussion perhaps I should say, from our Counselor, Mr. Ronellis.
Okay. Well, this is going to be a thumbnail sketch of constitutional law. There'll be a test at the end, so I encourage you to take notes. Constitutional law is one of those things that you hear a lot about it, and you hear a lot of people claim to be constitutional experts, and it is far more complicated than anybody could achieve expert status in any short period of time. I do not claim to be an expert myself, although having studied it quite a bit in law school and having to apply it as a lawyer, including my seven years in the county council's office, but in the context of these discussions we've had about who interprets the law, here's my summary and suggestion. And I'll start with the hackneyed beginning of the country. One of the nice things about going to law school is you learn a lot of American history, and the structure of the country and how it came about influences its laws. And if I'm telling anybody anything they already know, and they're offended by the level of presentation, I apologize, but we go back to 1787 when the Constitution was signed. It was ratified four years later, and you may, I'm sure you're aware, that the Constitution of the United States refers to three branches of government, the executive, the legislative, and the judicial. And in the early days of the country, how the interplay between those three branches was somewhat in flux and somewhat ambiguous and uncharted. Fairly early, in 1803, was the case of Marbury versus Madison, which stood for the principle that only the judicial branch has the ability to interpret the Constitution and apply it to the legislation adopted by the Congress. Only the Supreme Court has the final say in determining whether something is constitutional or not. Up until then, so for the first 10 or 12 years that the country was operating in its new form, it was uncertain who would determine whether legislation adopted by Congress was constitutional and enforceable by the executive branch. So, the Constitution, interestingly enough, little vignettes here, it was a unanimous decision in Marbury versus Madison, and the vote was four to nothing. There were only six members of the Supreme Court in 1803, two of whom were out sick that day. So, there were four votes in favor of the Marbury versus Madison, and there was a lot to it, but the point was the Supreme Court would decide in the final analysis what was constitutional and what was not. The various states all have their own state law systems. California has it, and for the most part, most states mirror what the federal structure is. We have a legislature, we have an executive branch, and we have a judiciary in California. In California, we have a constitution, state constitution. We have a state court system that goes from Superior Courts to Courts of Appeal and the California Supreme Court. And the principles of legislative interpretation are basically the same in both the federal system and in the state system. The final say rests with the courts, and in the court system, the final say rests with the Supreme Court. It doesn't come as a surprise that not every law, not every ordinance is subject to, has a record of court interpretation. And when a matter is brought to court, it goes first to the Superior Court, which is the trial court, and you can get an interpretation and a decision from the Superior Court. And in most, almost all Superior Court cases, there is no precedential value, meaning if a judge of our court here in Stockton renders a decision on an interpretation of an ordinance or a statute, he does not, his opinion or her opinion is not published, so it is not binding on other courts, not even necessarily other judges within the same Superior Court. But when matters get appealed from the Superior Court, they go to the Courts of Appeal, and we have districts in California. They divide the state up into districts, so an appeal from San Joaquin County goes to the Third District Court of Appeal, which sits in Sacramento. And when a case is decided on appeal in Sacramento by the Third District Court of Appeals, the judges decide whether or not the case is significant enough to result in a published opinion. If it's a published opinion, then it has some degree of precedential value, but you can have differing opinions on the same basic set of circumstances in the different districts. So, the court sitting in Sacramento may rule one way, and a court sitting in San Diego may rule differently, and if that's the case, then the matter is likely to end up with the state Supreme Court in Sacramento, and then the state Supreme Court's decision will be binding for the entire state, assuming that they publish. So, that's the layer. And there's all sorts of rules that the courts apply in determining how to interpret legislation, and I won't bog you down with that. But in the final analysis, it's for the courts to make a determination as to whether or not a statute is constitutional, and whether, how the statute is to be applied to a particular set of facts that are brought to the court in the form of litigation. And that's true in the state level, it's true in the federal level. Most of what this body is going to be dealing with is going to be state laws, county ordinances, and so when you have in your job descriptions for county positions that one of the duties of a county employee is to interpret the laws, that means, in my view, that the county employee at first blush has to operate his position or her position consistent with the laws, and if there are published opinions on a particular statute or ordinance, that will guide not only that employee, but his or her department and the Board of Supervisors on behalf of the entire county. So, those kinds of issues come up on a regular basis. We have lots and lots of laws and ordinances, and not all of them by a long shot have gone through the court process. So, you don't necessarily have published opinions and firm guidance on how to apply things. So, if you are, and you can imagine, if you were a deputy sheriff, and you're in the field, and you're presented with a case or a circumstance situation, you may have to interpret the law on the spot as to whether or not the situation you're faced with falls under a particular law. And that law could be a county ordinance, it could be a state law, it could be a federal law. Law enforcement officers are there to enforce the law, and they are not free to decide on the spur of the moment whether a law is to be enforced or not. They have to deal with it as it comes. So, there's some degree of latitude there, but it's always subject to appeal. And in the county system, if you have a county employee who's interpreting a law that has never been interpreted or put into rules and regulations by the department head, the Board of Supervisors or whatever, the county employee has to do the best he or she can do to deal with the law at the time, can ask for guidance from the department head, the department head can ask the Board of Supervisors for guidance. We have in this county, as do most counties of size, have three legal departments. You have the public defender, you have the district attorney, and then you have the county council. And one of my pet peeves is people who spell county council, C-O-U-N-C-I-L. It's county council, C-O-U-N-S-E-L, which means lawyers. County council is spelled C-O-U-N-S-E-L. That means lawyers. It's not like the city council, which is C-O-U-N-C-I-L. That's a group of elected officials. It's just a pet peeve I have. Okay? So, it is not unusual for a county department to send a written request to the county council's office for an opinion, saying, "We're coping with this set of facts, and we don't know how to apply the law," and ask for the county council, council, excuse me, to give them guidance. In my first seven years as an attorney, I was in the county council's office. I used to represent school districts, I represented the county assessor, I represented the county tax collector, I handled property tax issues on appeal to the Board of Equalization and all that. And you can imagine in my, how long ago it was that in 1978, we passed as a state Proposition 13, which radically changed local government finance and particularly property tax law. And so, we had to grapple with that whole new system of laws. And so, we were issuing opinions, we were dealing with things, and all that stuff matriculated through the court system for years before we had a rock-solid history of how to apply Proposition 13. And there were administrative agencies that issued regulations and guidelines on that, chief among them, the State Board of Equalization, whose job it was, it was to oversee the property tax system. So, they issued regulations, and they do to this day. There are administrative regulations that instruct county assessors, county tax collectors, county auditors, county boards of equalization, how to apply Prop 13. And some of those regulations get appealed, and the final say is with the state Supreme Court. We had a state Supreme Court decision in 1986 by the Roseburg Court that upheld the validity of Prop 13. There was a question as to whether or not that proposition was properly written and passed. The nutshell of it was that when you have a state constitutional amendment that's done by initiative, meaning in those days, the Jarvis-Gan Group proposed Prop 13, well, those kinds of initiatives are only supposed to deal with one subject, not multiple subjects. And there was a lot of controversy as to whether or not Prop 13 was too broad, dealt with too many subjects, and was not a legitimate amendment to the state constitution. And the state Supreme Court said that it was, and that was a very, very controversial decision, but it's held up over the years. So, we have Prop 13, and we deal with it. So, the point, in my view, of having the types of job descriptions that you're dealing with is that those county employees have to apply the law as they see it in the first blush, when something first comes to them. They can seek assistance, they can ask for guidance from their supervisor, supervisor can ask for guidance from the department head, the department head can go to the county council and say, "Give us something in writing that we can use." And until the state Supreme Court makes a published opinion on that subject, it's not final. So, when it's brought up that only the courts can interpret the law in a compelling, binding manner, that's true. But if you are taking a matter to the courts, you're looking at probably several weeks or months just to get a Superior Court decision. You can't go straight to the Supreme Court. It has to, you have to go through the chain of command. So, you'd have a Supreme Court, Superior Court case, that could be appealed to the Courts of Appeal, and that goes from the Court of Appeal to the Supreme Court. You cannot guarantee that you'll get to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court decides whether it will hear a case or not. They make a determination whether a case is significant enough that it requires their time, and usually, the Supreme Court will not take a matter up unless there is some difference of opinion among the Courts of Appeal. So, to get a final say from the state Supreme Court may take years, and county employees can't wait years to do their job. They have to deal with it as best they can. So, the shorthand interpretation that I would give you is that everybody, in their own way, has to interpret the law as best they can, but that does not mean they can command others to see it their way. So, you do it as best you can and deal with the consequences. There was brought up that in June, there was a Supreme Court, United States Supreme Court opinion that affected this area on the federal level. One of the constant frictions that we have in this country is how administrative agencies interpret the law. And in the federal system, you have very large agencies that issue guidelines and regulations interpreting federal legislation. And in the 1970s, we had a couple of, we had several new federal agencies that came on board. You had the Equal Opportunity, Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, you had the Environmental Protection Agency, and some others that came into play, and they... What'd she say last night? If you went to one of his rallies, people would get up and leave because of the boring. Okay, anyway, so, there was a volume of litigation, particularly on the Environmental Protection Agency, where they were issuing guidelines on air quality and water quality, and what companies could do as far as discharging stuff into waterways and creating air pollution and so on, so forth. And big business was very unhappy with that, having to abide by these regulations that these federal agencies were issuing in response to legislation that Congress had adopted. And so, the theme from a lot of business interests was that they didn't want to be bound by agency interpretations. They wanted the ability to go to court and have courts determine whether an ambiguous statute should be interpreted this way or that way. And as a matter of judicial policy, the Supreme Court adopted the Chevron decision, case involving Chevron, and you can imagine why Chevron was involved, because it was an oil company, and they were being impacted by these EPA regulations. And the Supreme Court, by a six-to-three decision in 1984, said that if a federal agency who regularly deals with a subject matter has rendered interpretations, regulations, and interpret those regulations on a consistent basis over a period of time, that the courts were ordered by the Supreme Court to give deference to the state, to the agency's interpretation. And their main reason for doing that was to keep the courts from being inundated with constant barrage of litigation. And there was also a concern that in the federal system, you know, the federal system covers 50 states. So, you could have a trial court in the federal system that's called the district court. You could have a trial court in Seattle that would interpret a EPA regulation or a federal law dealing with air pollution. And then you could have another district court in Texas that would give a different interpretation of it. And the companies that are affected by this could go what we call forum shopping. They might find a judge in Minnesota that they liked, his interpretation or her interpretation. They might find a judge in Minnesota that they liked, his interpretation or her interpretation of the law. And they bring their cases there. And if there were difference opinions in the district courts, then it would go, you'd have Courts of Appeal, and we have 11 circuits of appellate courts in the country. And then it'd take a long time before it ever got to the Supreme Court. And that was just unwieldy for the volume of disputes there were on these things. So the Supreme Court said, "No, if the federal agency has established a rule and it is not on its face ambiguous, then the courts will defer to that." Because they are specialized. These agencies deal with these issues on a regular basis, whereas the courts do not. Courts deal with everything, and they don't have necessarily any expertise in water quality or air quality and that sort of thing. So there was a deference, a rule of deference to these agency interpretations. And then in June, the big business didn't like that ruling. They've argued against it, they've pounded the table, they've made noise about it. And we just so happen now to have a makeup on the Supreme Court where three new judges have come on, and they agreed with the big business. They say, "No, we don't want to have the courts have to defer to the agencies. If a statute is believed to be ambiguous, then the court to whom the case is brought has to make its own determination. It cannot defer, or it doesn't have to defer to the federal agency." That's what the Chevron decision was. So it reversed that order of deference to agency opinions. We've never had that in California for state law. There is a doctrine that the California appellate courts apply that says, "Well, if in a case where there are state administrative provisions and interpretations that are at issue, if a particular regulation has been applied by a particular agency consistently over a long period of time, and the courts have upheld that, and the parties have generally, the parties affected by that particular area of law have generally acknowledged that the state's interpretation is legitimate, then yeah, the court can apply or take into account how the agency has interpreted that particular area. They're not compelled to. That's the difference is, we don't have a rule of deference saying, "Court, you have to defer to the agency." You don't. But you can, if you think it's reasonable to do so. So it really is not, that court, the only reason I bring that up is because it was brought up, and I don't think it applies to our situation entirely. What we're talking about is employees who have to grapple with the law that is involved in something that they're dealing with. And the employee should seek guidance if they have the time to. They should not be making their own law, their own interpretation, if one already exists. If the department in which they work has guidelines already. For example, the assessor's office, you have appraisers that go out and appraise property and how property is used and all that. They have lots of established procedures and guidelines in the assessor's office based on history. And most of those people aren't going to be facing anything new except in rare instances. So they're going to have departmental rules and regulations and history and supervisors to go through and all that. So it's unlikely that somebody in the appraiser's off, or the assessor's office who's doing their job is going to be on their own interpreting the statute. It's possible that they do, but there's going to be checks and balances. There, you say, if an appraiser goes out and puts a value on property, there is opportunity for a taxpayer to call and question that. And there's a mechanism for the Board of Equalization, the local Board of Equalization, to review what's done and so on and so forth, and you work up the ladder. So my advice to you, and I'll take questions or whatever, questions or objections, is that it doesn't do violence to our legal system to say, "County employees' duties include interpreting the law." What you have to read into that is that they're going to interpret it only as they have to, given the certain circumstances that they're presented with. And it's always subject to review and oversight all the way up the chain, all the way up to the Supreme Court, if that's what it takes. So I'll pause there.
Does anyone want, do any follow-up questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. First of all, I want to thank Professor Ornalis for a tremendous, very wonderful presentation. Thank you so much. You did an excellent job of reader research and presentation. I want to thank you for that. Now, here locally, and with regard to what we do here and our local county government, the Board of Supervisors, they pass the laws. They make the laws, correct?
The ordinances, yes.
Ordinances, okay, thank you. The local, local. And the administration, which we're all, you're all a part of, your duties are to implement and, of course, with having our police force, implement, enforce, teach, promulgate, publish, and make sure that everyone understands the laws or the ordinances. And those, and when you're, and then we have the courts, of course, that, as described, well-described, they deal with where people have problems, where they have conflicts about what the law is or who's right or wrong, and whether the law should, is a good law or not. They do that, they deal with that. And I think it goes without saying, when you, as a part of the administration, have to implement a law, it goes without saying that you do address a non-judicial interpretation. It's a non-judicial problem with our job descriptions, and you've taught me this, Professor, saying that you should have the skills, knowledge, and ability to interpret the laws. It's a non-judicial interpretation. It's a, it's a, it's the same thing that the man in the, or woman in the street can do. They gotta, they gotta decide, well, they have to decide, what is the law? What does it mean? How is it to be followed? And, but it's not their duties. It's certainly and the skills that you need. Because when you, when you are in the process of implementing the law, you are in effect deciding what the law is. You can say, and you don't really have to use that word. You don't have to use "interpret," because there's other words that can also be that. You decide, you determine, you determine that what the law is. Because when you use that, interpret the laws, you're really, I think it's repugnant to the form of government we have in terms of those, that duty is with the courts. The duty is not with the administration. I don't know if I made myself clear, but that's the problem I have. Because I have a real strong conviction and thing that that's the right way to look at our three branches of government, whether it's local, state, or federal. And I don't see, I don't see why we can't handle it that way. Okay?
Thank you. Did you want to respond, or are you done?
No, I think what Commissioner Geteris is after is tweaking the wording of your duties section.
Yes.
Take the word interpretation out there, replacing it with something else.
Yes, I agree, I agree. That's what you're looking for, and you've made that clear, and you've made your reasoning clear. But I don't hear the department heads agreeing with you. I don't hear them being willing to substitute another word and, a different word, and to... I know you feel like you're defending the country, and I heard you say "repugnant." That's a very strong word. So I communicated with that word. For me, on this, as a commissioner, it feels unnecessarily draconian because one person's opinion is being put on all the departments. And what I'm hearing from them is that it's hamstringing them for the hiring and retention of employees. So I'm hopeful that we can come to a resolution today, but that is, that is my perspective on it.
The thing that I'd like for all of us to look at or think of is, what would a representative of the court, a representative of the court sitting in here, and what would they, how would they look at it? How would they say, "Wait a minute," you know? Think about that. Now, I think if our Board of Supervisors would hear all of this that we're discussing, and then tried to say, "Well, what should we have in the duties of our employees? Should we have that?" And if they would make that kind of a conversation among them with a representative of the court present to give their view, I think you'd come up with an entirely different outlook, look-out resolution.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the other two commissioners, do you have something that you would like to add, please?
I appreciate your conviction, I really do. And that's one of the reasons that we're commissioners, because we have a conviction of what we believe. However, respectfully, I think that it's necessary. It is a skill that's needed, however, it's a duty that's expected. And in communicating to a potential employee what their job is to do, I think that's pertinent to their job. As to interpreting law, every person in here, every day interprets law to a degree. You take any department in this county, you talk about CPS, you talk about Sheriff's Department, every one of those agents make an interpretation of law in every case that they have, understanding that the person that they're making that, or the case-by-case situation can be and most likely will be appealed to a court to set before a judge in which the judicial makes the final say. However, it is expected by the leadership and by this county that if you have that job, is you to interpret and enforce as you interpret the law as it applies to your job. So I feel like having that duty, that's an expectation that we expect. I expect a sheriff's deputy to be able to interpret the law. I expect a CPS agent to be able to interpret that law as it applies to child protective agency or elderly care. And then apply it with the understanding, as he stated, that it would be questioned. So I would have to stand with that, that I appreciate your conviction on it. I just don't think that it would be seen that way. I think if you look at other agencies, even on a state level, when legislation goes into law, there are analysts that it goes before that determine whether or not that legislation is possible before the governor signs it. Those legislations are not lawyers, those are not attorneys. They have legal experience, they have qualified experience, but they're not, it's not a staff of lawyers that interpret that law to determine whether or not legislation will be signed. So even on a state level, it's not required, but it is a duty that is expected. So I think as the county would apply in mirroring that, I think that would be justifiable.
Mr., are you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna screw up your name, I haven't said it in a while. Are you laughing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we already have rules and regulations, laws already implemented. But I know everyone, for their own sake, they interpret the rules and regulations to take the advantage of that. But if there are new rules and it will be implemented, there are top officials, elected officials are there to implement the new rules or laws and which even every department or something within the HR, they have their own rules the employees have to follow. So there's, even though people interpret, but there is rules to follow, or we can go to the county court or Superior Court, which they can make a final decision.
Let me follow up on one thing about... There can be damage done by having, for example, public defender, because when you interpret law, you decide whether it should be followed or not. You're deciding whether it's constitutional or not. If a public defender's office department decides law is... If they're really doing the interpretation as the interpretation is, then they can say, "It's not constitutional, I don't want any of you to follow the law." Now, you may say, "Well, no, that would never happen." Well, it has happened when police officers have gone before a judge and they said, "We're not going to sign this as you think because you interpret the law differently from our superiors." Now, I do agree that everyone interprets the law, but it's not their job duty. It's not their duty, and it shouldn't be written down as a job duty. It might be that they need to have that experience, they had to have that knowledge, they need to have that ability in order to implement, enforce, carry on, do their job. But that's not their job, that's not their duty. It's the duty of the courts, it's the job of the courts.
Thank you. So I'm trying to figure out where we go from here. You've heard your fellow commissioners, you've heard our counsel. Ms. Goodman, have you ever made a statement on this?
Well, thank you. I would say, probably knowing me, I've probably made a statement on this. I would just say that, you know, as we look at our job descriptions, it is important. They're used for a lot of, in a lot of ways. As was mentioned here, we use them to communicate with future employees about what the job is and what's expected of them. And really, you know, from a technical standpoint, the abilities, the knowledge, skills, and abilities that are listed really do tie back to the duties. And so we would be looking for some kind of, you know, correlation between those two things. And so they're also used to set expectations. So when an employee is hired, you know, a manager would, supervisor would review those expectations with a new employee and talk about the type of work that they're going to be doing. And then as the employee is working, you know, that first, you know, in most cases, 12-months period is a probationary period to determine if the employee possesses the knowledge, skills, and abilities to do the duties that are listed there in that job description. And then evaluations are completed annually to ensure that the employee is performing in line with the scope and role in line with the scope and role of their job. There are times when employees may say, "I don't think that what you're asking me to do is part of my job." And one tool that the manager has is the job description to show that, yes, this is something that's expected of you in your role. So I do believe that, I very much appreciate the education. I enjoyed it very much. I think we've had a lot of discussion on it. I know that we at one point did schedule time to talk to our county council as well, and I think their view lined up very much with Ms. Ornellis as far as, you know, it is an expectation of the positions. And so in my opinion, having that, the, as a, you know, regular course of our work here, to be able to include that in job descriptions is practical and necessary.
Thank you. I think the path forward, what is reasonable to me is, so that we don't, every meeting, talk about this, is that one of us makes a motion that, as a commissioner, we will no longer object to the word "interpret" in a duty statement, and I'm looking at Mr. Ornellis because I didn't discuss this with him, and going out a little bit on a limb, would that be appropriate?
Well, I think Mr. Gutierrez could just have a standing objection.
I do.
Yeah, I know you do. I just don't think he needs to get lecture about it each and every time it comes up. And with this group, everybody knows where he's coming from, and he could have a standing objection to the use of that word in job descriptions if the other commissioners are not of a mind to say, "Well, we need to substitute something new for that rule, for that word."
I promise I won't be bringing it up anymore. I'll just be, I got a right to vote, and you know, there's always minority opinions. Courts have minority opinions. Just as we had three tremendous minority opinions on some of the things that have just been coming out of our Supreme Court. So you can just recognize that I might just be a minority opinion on having just that in our duties, but not in the knowledge and experience and ability, because I think you do need to have that in order to implement, enforce laws.
That seems like an excellent path forward, that you could, you could do that without going into a long explanation every time, hopefully, because that's the part I personally object to, hearing the same story and the same reasonings over and over again.
Well...
So if you can, that would be great, if you could, and you've listened to the Director of Human Resources, you've heard the counsel assigned to us, you've heard the three commissioners, we've heard the, from the deputy, from the, excuse me, I did not mean to say that, the department heads. You've explained it to all of them. I don't think ever one has said, "Oh, my goodness, I need to change that." So with all of that, I certainly am not going to try and stand in your way if you want to do a standing objection and not vote for any, or however you want to handle it yourself.
No, I think we should just handle each one as they come along. That's, I think we could just move along now, I think, unless anyone else has anything else to say.
Well, I appreciate that suggestion, so I concur. And with that, let's move on to the Classification Project from Community Development.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Amy Burmer, Human Resources. This is Classification Project 24-023 regarding the Development Services Technician Classification Series. After repeated recruitment difficulties to fill Development Services Technician vacancies, Community Development and Human Resources worked to assess the classification factors for this journey-level class and the lead Development Services Senior Technician. Human Resources consulted with subject matter experts in community development and reviewed comparable classifications in other public agencies to determine if the county's minimum requirements were standard to the market. Our research found that the current minimum qualifications exceeded that for both formal education and the years of experience required to substitute that education. For many technician classifications, including the classifications presented today for your review, formal education is not typically the most effective or common way to gain the knowledge, skills, and abilities successful, for successful job performance in a technician role. Rather, a combination of experience and specialized experience and training, or I'm sorry, specialized training and experience are the most effective ways to achieve technical expertise. In this particular case, there is even a permit technician certification that was often found in the comparator classifications, and with which we propose to replace the formal education requirement with at both levels. So with that note that we are proposing you adopt the new qualifications in a moving-forward fashion so that existing incumbents are not harmed, and we did share the draft class specifications with Service Employees International Union on August 29th, and no objections or feedback were received prior to this meeting on that topic. So we do have also, yeah, okay, Community Development Director Jennifer Jolly, as well as Deputy Director Building Inspection Jeff Niemeyer, available remotely should you have questions of the department.
Thank you very much. I suspect there are more than one of us with a question. Do either of you have a question? Mr. Gutierrez?
No, I just, as you know, that I'm on the typical duties. Just, number one, with interpreting the term there, I'm opposed to that. The others are fine, interpret and explain land use requirements, fine, and interpretation of minimum qualification. But I'm opposed to the word interpreting there in typical duties one.
Thank you. I'm, I was surprised you didn't retain the education. I follow the argument for the permit, you know, that there's this certificate, and that experience is actually better than education. But I wonder how someone comes to the county and gets on in this series if maybe they have a two-year degree in engineering or drafting, but they don't happen to have experience. Is there a junior level that they could get started on, or can you just not get hired unless you have two years' experience already?
That's a really good question, and, you know, the organizational chart that you should have attached, yes, that does not, it's okay. It actually doesn't sufficiently address that there are broader, it's a classification of the, of a series that's more broadly used throughout the county, but they are in support of the work particularly here at our county, so that they, if we're looking for an internal pattern from the very entry level, because the technician is a journey-level class, they will have had that experience opportunity to move in through our organization from entry exposure into that journey-level class. Of course, anyone coming from the outside would have to meet the minimum qualifications similarly, regardless of what their classification title was. It would need to be that type of qualified experience that would bring them in for that. So they would be able to come in at an entry level internally and from the outside. Hope that answers.
That did answer it, and that addressed my concern. I was just wondering about someone who aspired to this, and so there is a possibility for them to...
Yeah, and actually, the departmental representatives can confirm or correct me on this. It's just the way this particular organizational chart is structured, the support staff is reflected more in, aligned with administrative, but they are directly supporting this function.
Thank you. Ms. Jolly, do you want to comment on this?
Good afternoon, everyone. Jennifer Jolly, Director of Community Development. The only thing I would add is that I can tell you, historically, we have had a very difficult time recruiting for this type of a position due to the specificity of the skills that we previously required with knowledge of building and planning. What I think the changes here would do, not only would this allow us to recruit externally, but internally, we often have had other staff, such as some of our office assistants, senior office assistants, specialists, who have become aware of the job and have gained some knowledge just by working in the department about some of the skills that would be really wonderful to have in a Development Services Technician. So we're hopeful that with the changes today, we can not only encourage external candidates to apply, but we can also encourage our internal candidates that previously did not qualify.
Thank you. That addressed my concern, and I think there is another question from the commission.
Yes, I just was, I just noticed my note, and typical duties, number one, could you look at that? Are you looking, do you see it?
No, I can't see it.
Okay, what would harm to say assist the public in following a variety of planning and building codes and land use regulations? Or assist the public in adhering to a variety of planning and building codes? Would that change anything?
I'm gonna defer to my, well, I actually have my building official, Jeff Niemeyer, on the line, as well as Deputy Director Corinne King. They both utilize Development Services Technicians, so in terms of the specifications, I'm gonna refer to them.
Yeah, good afternoon. Jeff Niemeyer, Deputy Building Official. So they would, Development Service Tech would assist the public in completing their application and providing the information that's required by the building code to submit their application and their plans. So that's how they would assist.
Well, then, you don't really need the word interpreting there, do you? You could use following a variety of planning and assist the public in following a variety of planning and building codes, or assist the public in adhering to a variety of planning and building codes. Would that satisfy you?
Yes, it would. I don't want to get into the interpretation conversation, but yes, that would, that would work to remove that.
Thank you.
And thank you for that. Mr. Gutierrez, this is the sort of thing that I exactly object to. Whenever you bring this up...
Let me make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not done talking.
Well, I know that you are opposed to me saying this, but I, it just makes sense. I mean, we don't need to have it in there in that duty. We could, and I move that we would approve it with, with the word following a variety of, assist the public in following a variety of planning and building codes.
Do I hear a second?
No. Is there a second to the motion?
Okay, the motion didn't pass for want of a second. Here's what I object to when you put people on the spot like that. It's your wording. You always say something like, and of course, this is not exactly what you say, but you always say, "What's wrong with that? Wouldn't it be just as good? Couldn't you accept this word?" And that puts them on the spot, because they know very well, the people that are listening there, and the people that listen every month when they come in here, that they have gone through a lot of work to make this change, and if we don't approve it, they're stuck. So it, it comes across to me as you were, you're giving them what sounds like an ultimatum, and they want something. They want this duty statement passed. They want to go on with their work. If you said it differently, if you said, "I want you to understand. I have an objection. The objection is the word interpret. Only the courts can do that," and made your statement without making it sound so much like you were really pressing them to make the change, and now I'm done, and I'll move the floor back to you.
I'm sorry you feel that way, but I don't, I don't see how I'm doing anybody any pressure. People, we're all adults. We can all make our own decisions.
Okay, then... May I just add one thing? This, what's before you is an amendment of an existing specification, and that wording that you have expressed your concern with is existing language that was previously approved by the commission and the Board of Supervisors, and so we have not asked for a change relating to that duty statement.
Thank you for that clarification. So, go ahead.
No, I just say that the commission could make recommendations at any time, whether you're bringing them up or not. We stand as a body independent.
And I certainly don't want you to think that I'm in any way trying to keep you from making recommendations, or as Mr. Lee said, you know, you've got your passion, and I do respect and appreciate that. But I just want to make sure, and I'm so sorry, Jeff, I didn't catch your last name, but I just want to make sure that you understand that this change is up to you. It's been explained to you, and if you choose to make it, that's fine, but it's not a requirement.
That's correct.
Well, thank you for that. Whatever it takes to get this approved, I'm willing to remove that. Yes, that would make me happy.
That's what I thought. I, yes.
May I comment quickly on, so kind of taking back to general classification methodology? Just rest assured, so word choice is important, and sometimes we are missed, as you have pointed out, and that assistance is very helpful, and we are very open to that. Ironically enough, interpreting does tend to be a significant transition action from one level of work to another, and so if we are hyper, if we are focused on this particular word, I would just suggest that we can go back and do job analysis. As those who put that word in there initially, we can refresh our job analysis to see if it concurs with removing, replacing, doing something else aside from using the word interpreting. And this isn't just a San Joaquin County preference that you see it often. It is through classification methodology used, particularly in public sector classification. It's one of those types of words that we will use to distinguish between levels of work and level of responsibility, infers a lot about consequence of error as well, right? So those are built into using those types of, hopefully, every word that we have in here, or most of them. And we use those to determine what the level of work is, the consequence of error. There's a lot of things that stem out from using particular nomenclature or words.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Amy.
Can I say something on this? Yeah. I understand the opinion. I mean, coming from Anthony, I understand his concern, because if we search this document, you can see many, the interpret word so many times repeatedly used, but doesn't mean it allows the employee to interpret, because each department, they have their own guidelines and rules and regulations which the employee has to follow. So I don't have any concern on that, using it, but it's up to the HR department want to bring in, because we mentioned already, the county has approved this word, but it doesn't mean exactly the interpreting, because each department, they have their own rules and regulations to follow. Nobody cannot interpret there. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I think we can move forward. Is there a motion to approve Classification Project CP 24-023?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Classification Project CP 24-023 as it is written. I'd also like to go on the record and say thank you to the Community Development Department as someone who came up as ditch diggers and hard workers, that you guys are opening up a soft entry. for people that don't have an education to get viable jobs, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you, is there a second?
I can second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, the motion has passed, and we're accepting the project, thank you. That takes us to public comment. Ms. Strange, are there any public comments? We do not have any public comment, thank you. Okay, our next meeting is October 9th, and it is my understanding that we have one commissioner who knows he won't be here. Is there anyone else who won't be here?
I'm good.
You're good? I will be here. Okay, on the other hand, we may look at, the department may look at the load and make a decision as to whether or not we'll have a meeting. This one was nice and short and yet felt important, and I appreciated your comments to the Community Development Board, because I agree, getting different people employed, that's what we want to do.
So I do anticipate that we will have some projects for presentation. I know we specifically will have a report to the commission on a fitness for duty.
Okay, okay. And will we be setting a hearing, do you think, next time, a hearing date?
I would hope so.
Okay, okay. So they'll be bringing some information back to us for that, too. Well, with that, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.